All boarding cases, door, the door is flat.
The leaders see the flag of the United States of America and to the other for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everybody tonight. We'll get started with.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda with the policy amendments. Additional certified classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E3. Add item number EF, E4F, red sky land agreement. And remove item number G1, policy JBC enrollment from the original agenda.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor? Close? Thank you. Any public comment? And have no correspondence, so we'll move right on to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda as.
Thank you. One second. Those in favor? Close? And we'll go with Mr. Weedman.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Todd Weedman. I'm with Kansas State NTSS Core Team. MTSS is multi-tiered system supports, in case you've worked for that. I've been with the team for, going on five years now. And just a little bit of background, so you know kind of who's talking to you. I'm from central western Kansas, Burdette. Any of you know where Burdette is? You get a prize in it. No, I was just kidding. You got it. A lot of people out here do know, because they go through it all the time.
Yeah, drove past it today.
Did you really? Well, when I go to eastern Kansas and ask that, they have no idea where Burdette is. So, I can be safe saying there's a prize over there. From a farm in Burdette. Graduated from Wichita State University and my wife and I moved up to Indiana to pursue college coaching. And got into administration and teaching and all that. Was a principal for the last 15 years before coming back home. Elderly parents and all that good stuff brought us back. So, we now reside in Mays, which is just outside of Wichita. And when we came back, decided we want to do something a little different. So, that's how I got into the MTSS. We do all the research, writing, training, supporting and so forth of the MTSS materials in the area of reading, mathematics and behavior. I've been working with Garden City now for two, three, four? I don't know, a long time. Actually, it has been four years. Because when I first came back, we started with Behavior Pilot. And then more recently, I've been working with Garden City from a district facilitator standpoint as we kind of go back and shore up the areas of reading, math and behavior. So, tonight, excuse me, I was asked to kind of give you an overview of MTSS, just a refresher if you will. And let you know a little bit about where Garden City is, where we plan to go, what the future holds, and the connection between MTSS and the College Career Ready Standards, Common Core Standards from Kansas. So, if any of you have any questions after tonight, my email is on the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions we have discussion that you might have. The definition of MTSS, I'm not going to read it to you, because obviously you folks can read. But I do want to call your attention to some of the key words. For example, coherent continuum of evidence-based and system-wide practices. Everything we do is based on research. So, we don't make up things. We don't put things in that we like or think might work. Everything we do, say and talk about and train on is research-based. The rapid response is a key word. In the past, a lot of times, we've tried to figure out how to serve a particular child after they have quote-unquote fallen off the train. Whether it be in reading, math, or behavior, or two, or all three. And what we try to do is become more rapid in our response and actually help them before they fall too far behind. Database monitoring, we base all of our decisions on data. And if you talk to folks in your district, they can tell you about some conversations we have, we have had around that. It's a process in itself for us as educators to distance ourselves from personal ownership and make decisions based on the data. And then empowering each Kansas student to achieve high standards. Obviously, that aligns right along with the new Common Core. The core beliefs, these are the MTSS core beliefs. Now, your district has also developed their own core beliefs, which I'm sure Darren Leanne can share with you, if you haven't already seen them. But these are the core beliefs of MTSS. And if you'll notice, every is in three of them. And especially, I want to call your attention to, every leader at all levels are responsible for every child. One of the things we pose to the buildings and the districts we work with is exactly that. Every leader. And when we talk about that, we remind people that that is not only by title. You don't have to have a title behind your name to be a leader in education. Every single person employed in the district is a leader. And we ask them to be responsible for every child. So, it's a shared responsibility academically as well behaviorally. The last one is also important, because as we know in education, we have a tendency to kind of jump on the ship as they come by. The next, the next great thing that's floating by will jump on that and say, oh, this is going to fix our problems. And a couple of years down the road, it's not. The next ship that floats by, we jump on and so forth. So, because it's research-based and because we base our decisions on data, we do intentionally change and we make sure that it's coherent and dynamic. And everything we talk about is from a systemic point of view. So, it's not just decisions that are made for one individual building at Garden City. It's about a systemic approach, the entire district. This is just a graphic to kind of explain past to present. In other words, in the past, we've worked from an intervention standpoint. Like I said earlier, a kid might demonstrate a problem or an issue, and then we try to intervene. Well, we try to prevent an MTSS. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. We've tried to move from which student needs help to what help does each student need. And then finally, we've tried to move from having programs and people available to having intentional design and redesign of services that's already available in place for students that need it. So, in other words, we're requiring a shift in focus from students or from groups to students. In other words, we used to talk about ELL, Special Education, General Education. We used to compartmentalize students. Well, now, we're trying to get the shift of focus to every ed, every education. And stop the conversation of my kids, your kids, those are your kids, to they're all our kids. And again, that goes back to the shared leadership and responsibility. You've probably heard about RTI, Response to Intervention. And a lot of people think that Kansas MTSS is RTI, and it's truly not. It is much broader than RTI. In case you didn't know, RTI was designed to have a mastering point of fifth grade. So, in other words, their goal is to get all kids to the fifth grade level and mastery that, and that's it. MTSS in Kansas is designed for the eighth grade. So, we try to get every kid to master the eighth grade components in reading and math instantly for the fifth grade. So, it's much broader. This is our logo. I'm sure you've seen this, because it's in your boardroom every time you meet. I just want to go through it briefly to kind of remind you of the components. The outer part, which we refer to as the hurricane, because it kind of looks like a hurricane warning, includes leadership, professional development, and empowering culture. Your district has already been through this. We're now working on the content-specific modules. But as you can see under leadership and professional development and empowering culture, those are the types of things that we talk about. And we actually have activities, designed activities to do. So, that is what, is what we have done so far. And then you move to the surrounding part of the triangle. We refer to this as CIA, curriculum, instruction and assessment. We are in the midst of this, as well as the next step, which I'll show you in a second. But for example, tomorrow, we're meeting with the district leadership team to start talking about the curriculum protocol for mathematics. We've done this process with reading, and now we're getting ready to start it with mathematics. So, this would be right in the midst of the CIA, the curriculum. And then we'll move on to instruction. The assessment discussion has already taken place. Garden City has done AIMS Web, which they, are you done? Are you done with the fall assessment, or are you in the midst of it? When were we? You're in the midst of it then. So, they're in the midst of their fall screener, what we call it, which is AIMS Web testing. And that brings us to this, the all sum and few. I want to spend just a couple of minutes on this, because this is really the meat of what's happening to quote-unquote your kids in the district. So, for example, in the all, all of your students are being screened right now with AIMS Web. And what that does is it tells us if they are at benchmark for their grade or not. So, we say flag or not flag. If they flag, then there's a process that they go through, whether it be reading, or math, or behavior, that then allows us to know as educators whether they need to be the sum or the few group, which is supplemental or intensive. So, a child that flags on the screener, we then know needs either supplemental intervention or intensive intervention. And the difference between those two things primarily is amount of time and size of the group that they're receiving the instruction within. So, supplemental is going to have a little bit larger group than the intensive group. And the supplemental is going to require a little bit less additional time than the[657.04][657.10]intensive group, okay? Now, keep in mind, any child that's in the supplemental or the intensive intervention group, they're receiving that instruction in addition to the core. So, I want to make it very clear, we never take a child out of the core instruction, which is the regular instruction that all kids receive, including special education children. They all receive the core instruction. And then they receive additional interventions as needed. So, that's the meat of the program. So, when we talk about the core supports for all students, these are the things that fall beneath that, academics and behavior side. As I've said, all students are involved in that. Evidence-based core curriculum and instruction and assessment system. And all decisions are made based on the data. And then behavior, which we're not, we're not to yet in Garden City. But these are the things that will be approached when we get to that. And then when we move to the sum, the supplemental, it's targeted skill intervention, small groups, frequent progress monitoring. So, once a kid is in an intervention, whether it's supplemental or intensive, we progress monitor that student to know if they're making progress or not. Because obviously, if they're in an intervention and they're not making progress, we need to change it, because they're not catching up. And there's a couple of different types of progress monitoring that goes on. There's progress monitoring to decide whether or not the child is obtaining the skills that they have been missing. So, in other words, is the intervention working? And then the other progress monitoring is AIMS Web progress monitoring, which tells us on a graph, is the child closing the gap? Are they getting back to closer to being on grade level? Which is obviously our goal. This process is fluid. So, a child can go into supplemental or intensive intervention, and they can get out of that and be only in the core again, if the data supports that. So, if they obtained the skills they were missing, they've gotten back to grade level benchmark status, then they go back to just core instruction. And we continue to progress monitor those kids on a monthly basis to make sure they're maintaining benchmark. This is a self-correcting feedback loop that we use, which is also in your room. So, you're probably at least familiar with seeing it. This is an important piece, and it's, it's interesting to watch. I've worked with several districts across the state in this process. And at the beginning, we're usually not operating in this manner real efficiently. But by the end of the first year or so, you really start to see it happen. So, let's start at the district leadership team, which Garden City does have. We meet on a pretty regular basis, and we make decisions that are for the benefit of the entire district. For example, when it came to the assessment discussion, that team decided to go to AIMS Web. So, it wasn't left to each individual building. So, they had to struggle with the decision. And then you might have one building doing AIMS Web, one building doing DIBLs, one building doing ICEP, one building doing STAR. And then when those kids move to the next level, or from a building to a different building, same level, it's something different. Now, it's one assessment system. So, that's an example of the decisions that are made at the district leadership team. The people that make up that district leadership team are obviously district folks. But then there are also people from the building leadership teams. So, there's a natural conduit for collaboration and communication between the building leadership teams and the district leadership teams. So, each building has a leadership team within itself, which is comprised of representatives from collaborative teams, which can be grade level, it can be departments at the high school, anything where the teachers and the folks in the building are broken into teams. So, there's always a conduit for collaboration and communication between all three teams. And all three teams meet on a regular basis in order to ensure consistent and accurate communication. And we get to realize needs at the district level that collaborative teams may have. But a building principal, for example, may not have the ability to say, yes, we'll do that. They may not have the money to do it. It may need to come to the district leadership team. So, it's a nice system for communication and consistent collaboration. So, this is just another picture, if you will, of what it's all about. And you guys are really in the yellow right now, integration and sustainability. Most of what we're doing has been done, it's just been a while. And there's new people, there's turnover. And we as an MTSS Core Team did not have a focus on the integration and sustainability when Garden City originally went through it. So, we're to blame more than anyone. Now, we do have a focus on that. We've done research, we understand its importance. So, we're helping Garden City work through the sustainability issues. So, when people move on, retire, whatever, it's able to maintain and continue proceeding.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
How about you just if you're working on it?
On the sustainability and integration?
Yeah.
The district leadership team is comprised of about, what, 50-some people? So, spread out throughout the district. So, out of 50-some, and I'm just guessing, might even be 60 folks. But out of those people, if a few people leave, retire, there's enough people within that district leadership conversations that it's going to be able to maintain itself. Whereas before, the district leadership team was not near that size. So, if a person from a specific building might have left, that building could have really been at a disadvantage, because they didn't have any what that was privy to the prior knowledge as well as ongoing conversations.
Okay, so it's not anything necessarily specific that, it's just making sure that you have enough people to keep that knowledge going?
It's people as well as, it's really the conversations. And we have tools like paper implementation fidelity, which actually gives components of discussion to make sure that things are in place and operating on an ongoing basis. So, even after I and the content specialists remove ourself from the picture, they'll be able to use that tool to continually have the conversations about, is this in place? Is it operating, or do we need to fix it? This is just another graphic, so we make sure you understand the difference between the core, the supplemental and the intensive. If a child, one of the questions that comes up a lot is, what if a child's in intensive intervention and it still doesn't work? Obviously, we try to change the intervention, we try to increase the time, or whatever the case may be. But if it still doesn't work, that isn't appropriate time possibly for a child to be referred for special services testing?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Didn't interrupt you. What does, what does the core group do while supplemental and intensive directives are being given to those students? Does the whole bus slow down?
Good question. Let me back up just a little bit even from that. For reading, for example, at the elementary, it's, the research states a 90-minute core reading, so that would mean all students are in 90 minutes of reading. Mathematics is usually around 60 minutes, 55, 60 minutes. So, if a, if a building decides to go to a walk-to-intervention model, there's two ways that can, that the services can be delivered within that walk-to-intervention model. I didn't bring a graphic, but maybe I can explain it to where you can understand. One way is a building-wide walk-to-intervention. So, let's say, for example, from 9:30 to 10 o'clock every day, or Monday through Thursday, every child in the building goes to an intervention, okay? Now, when I say that, a lot of people think, well, intervention, what if a child doesn't eat? Because intervention has a negative quantitative, negative thought process that comes with it. On AIMS Web, it will also tell you which kids are above average and well above average. So, those kids can be in interventions that challenge their academic thinking. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So, during that 9:30 to 10 o'clock, let's say, for example, every child goes through an intervention, whether it's a remedial-type intervention or a push intervention. Another way to do it is a stair-step walk-to-intervention, which would be, for example, let's say from 8:30 to 9:00 kindergarten, a remedial intervention, all kindergartners. And then, let's say, from 9:00 to 9:30, all first graders. And then from 9:30 to 10:00, all second graders. So, it really depends on your personnel and the availability you have as to which model you go to. There is another model, which is a pull-out model. So, everybody gets their core, and then if you need to, because of personnel, you can pull out the kids and do the small group interventions during that pull-out time. Usually, the pull-out time, because people, you know, you have to find the time, so usually they will come from elective-type classes. And then once the child is back to the benchmark, they're inserted back into the elective-type class.
So, then my question to you is, working with these?
It varies by building, but they do not come out of the core. They don't pull that back for the intervention. Florence Wilson's example of a walk-to-intervention school.
And that is very common for buildings that differ, because even within a district, different buildings have different personnel issues. And also, they have different number of kids that need the interventions, the remedial-type interventions.
That's a question I have, and I don't know if it's from your, from Dr. Dennis. But, I mean, I understand of the data-driven need for all of us. But one of the things that I think almost all of us have said at one point or another with our issues with no child left behind, is we're looking at one specific day in the life of a child. And, you know, say, for example, in third grade, they're excelling in their reading, and they come back in fourth grade, and they're scoring well below grade level. What's going on here? Well, the teacher comes to find out, there's divorce going on, who knows what's going on at the home, he's going back and forth. And then, but in the classroom, on a normal day-to-day basis, he, the child's reading at grade level. But the tenant doesn't say that.
Right.
So, I mean, how do we address that through this? Because if you're basing it off of AIMS Web on one given day, we're still having the same problem we've been complaining about with no child left behind.
Want me to take the first?
Well, it's, the difference is, it's not just that one thing. That may trigger some additional testing, some diagnostics. If you look on AIMS Web, for example, we may look at a phonics assessment, or a phonics screener, or some other type of diagnostic to see what the problem is. So, it's not just that. That one screener will trigger an additional response that may or may not lead to an intervention as such.
And another couple of components to that is, that's a very valid question. We have teachers all the time say, well, you know, Johnny took this test, and he flagged on it, but it just doesn't make sense. Retest it, re-screen it. That's allowable within the AIMS Web system, okay? But as Dr. Dennis said, there's, just because a student flags on the screener, doesn't mean they automatically go into a tiered dimension, especially within reading, because there's other steps that happen, like a QPS, quick phonics screener for certain kids. So, there's, there's several layers or checks and balances that would raise a flag if a child was inappropriately flagging on the screener. And in math, for example, a child flags on the screener, they go into a protocol intervention, which is, which means there's one intervention program for all kids, and they're, they're full, like, it's been 30 minutes talking about that, but I won't bore you with that unless you really want me to. But, and then within that intervention, again, there's the progress monitors. So, and there's curriculum-embedded progress monitoring, curriculum-embedded assessments that teachers should be doing on a daily basis, such as bell ringers, whiteboard activities. So, if a teacher sees a child is really progressing and getting these questions that they're assessing, they can give them the post-test, if you will. And if they, if they hit the benchmark in that post-test, they move on and move out. That's part of the fluidity and allows us to catch those kids that may have inadvertently or for whatever reason flagged on the screener.
Just had a question. How would the eligibility criteria determine for entering into the supplemental supports and intensive supports? Is that just totally?
Kids, no, it's a national percentile.
So, it isn't just Kansas?
No.
Or district-based?
No.
It's broader?
That's a, that's a great question. I should have mentioned that. AIMS Web is nationally known on thousands of kids, and are constantly updated nationally.
And is that consistent with our move to Common Core and the criteria for grade levels there?
AIMS Web is the most aligned assessment, universal screen and progress monitoring assessment right now. And nothing is completely aligned yet. Not a curriculum that's completely aligned yet, but it is the most aligned of the reasons. Very important. Sir, did you have a, did you have a question?
Yes, and you kind of addressed it a little bit. Curious, first of all, we're talking about this process being a continuous monitoring process.
Process.
And it gives us more real-time response. What, what is that data that we're collecting? Is it just the classroom performance?
Another good question. The AIMS Web, and I should tell you also, the kids are screened three times a year. Excuse me, right now, they're going through the fall screening. There'll be a mid-year screening, which districts choose before Christmas break or after Christmas break, doesn't affect the law, whichever one you choose. And then end of year, which is usually April-ish, enough time to get the data to make the intervention groups available at the first day of school, so that we don't have kids coming into school waiting on a needed intervention. But the report, the data can be looked at, at a, all the way down to a specific classroom, actually, all the way down to a specific child, and then to a specific classroom, to a grade level within a building, to a grade level within a district, to a building, to district-wide. So, there's several different layers that the data can be disaggregated to.
Well, that's, that sounds wonderful. But data's only as good as how you collect it and what it is. And that's, my question is, what is this data we're collecting? Do you walk through the door on time for that class?
Well, it varies with the content area, reading, math and behavior, in terms of the data collected. I am not a content specialist in reading, so I can't get very deep into the reading process or the reading data. Math, for example, we collect data on computation and concepts and application. Behavior has data collected, and that, that data is built upon each individual district. We'll look at, for example, office discipline referrals to see where the problems are lying or what time of the day they're lying. And then we'll create the data collection points from that. And then there's also a behavioral screener, which I'm not completely familiar with either, but that collects data related to external behaviors as well as internalized behaviors. And the, the school, the school that had the biggest problems, such as Columbine, most of those kids have been linked back to internalized behaviors.
So, can I, and then the other part, I think you started to address, is I'm kind of curious how good, because I don't really know, this AIMS Web versus other tests. You know, a child can be wonderful on one test, but not so good on another. One puts him way below average, the other exceptional, way above average. And is that sort of addressed in flagging and then intervention, if that's the right term? Judgment of the team?
Yes, it is. And that's a great point. We've gone into districts where their state assessment, for example, you know, they've had 90-some percent at benchmark. And then we've given the AIMS Web assessment, and it's been as big of a difference as 40 percentage points. So, you're right, that one test can yield a different result than another test. AIMS Web is based on the readiness skills that research has said is the, are the greatest and most accurate indicators for future success in reading and math. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. Good question. Got all of it right now? Okay, interrupt me anytime. Oh, let's back up. All right, the Common Core or College and Career Ready Standards?
If you would just take one and pass it down, please.
This is a brief that the Core Team developed. It's been about a year ago now. And again, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but I just want to call out a couple important points, because a lot of people will ask us, well, how does this relate to the Common Core? Is it appropriate for the Common Core? Does it align with the Common Core? And those are all very good questions, but some of those questions arrive, quite honestly, from misconceptions. So, I just want to point out a couple of things, and some of them are on the screen. The Common Core or College and Career Ready Standards and MTSS are integrated to support and complement each other. The Common Core provides the standards that describe what students should know and be able to do in content areas. That's, that's one of the biggest misconceptions. The standards, the Common Core or College and Career Ready Standards, they are what the students should know and by when, okay? MTSS is a framework in which the instruction and the curriculum and the interventions are put into place in order to help ensure. are put into place in order to help ensure the students do exactly that. So, they're really not competing against each other at all. And the point of emphasis is, you know, before the, the Common Core came, everybody had different curricula, different standards. Some used the state standards as the curriculum, and MTSS would work with that as well. So, they're really, they are connected, but one is not dependent upon the other. As far as instruction, the implementation of instruction should be consistent with research-based practices and include differentiated instruction. And the Kansas, KSD, Kansas State Department of Education recommends the implementation of these practices through the Kansas MTSS initiative. So, they have, it's not a mandate. A lot of people think that Kansas MTSS is a mandated program. It is not. It's still a grassroots effort. And then, finally, under intervention, Kansas MTSS provides a framework for the delivery interventions to students who require more explicit, systematic, focused, focused instruction to acquire the knowledge and skills represented in the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. So, very aligned, works seamlessly together. And in terms of school improvement, that is also what MTSS does. It provides a framework for a school improvement process. So, what's going on in Garden City? The implementing reading is happening now. We kind of restructured for last year through reading, developed a curriculum protocol for reading, got the assessment protocol together, and this year, we are implementing. As I've said several times, the kids are doing this reading now. We're here in a couple weeks to start to go through that data and start to lead them through the training of what to do with that data. Pilots going on to determine best way to address phonics needs. We did a screener in the spring, just to make sure everybody's comfortable, but also get some preliminary data, and it did point to some needs in the phonics instruction area. So, we have addressed that. We have a couple pilots going on to determine which one would be the best way to address that for all of the students moving forward. The district leadership team has been created. Role and responsibilities within that have been defined. Team norms have been created by that team. Decision-making method has been created by that team, and finally, the core beliefs have been created by that team. And then, the plan moving forward, this year, we will continue implementing reading and starting tomorrow, we will, we will begin structuring for the math. And then, next year through fifteen, sixteen, we will implement math and prepare for behavior integration. And then, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, we will be fully implementing with Kansas MTSS. And I just want to clarify why there's a little bit of wiggle room in there. The, the district is looking at the math curriculum, and right now, it's best to wait as long as we can because of the Common Core and letting the textbook companies and curriculum companies get caught up to the Common Core. They stamped it on there right away, but it, it's not aligned yet. So, that's the reason for a little bit of that wiggle room. And then, we, as a Core Team, are in the process of working with Dr. Kathleen Lane from the University of Kansas in preparing a model of behavior integration with academics. So, it will no longer be a standalone behavior model. It'll actually be an integrated behavior academic model that go hand-in-hand. So, we want to make sure that we have that worked out and developed before we come back to Garden City and take you through something, because we don't want to come back next year and say, "Well, hang on, let's change that again." So, that's the reason for a little bit of wiggle room in the timeline. Any other questions?
Other question, maybe not for you, Todd, necessarily, just sort of general question of how we're implementing this. With the wiggle room and the implementation timeline there, there might be a potential we have teachers teaching the curriculum without the benefit of implementation of this process?
That's certainly been true in math, yeah.
And so, in the math, Dr. Dennis, I'm, I'm wondering, if, if I'm a parent that has a child that is now working this sort of new approach to math, which Common Core or the new label tends to encourage, you know, more open thinking, not just choose A, B, C, or D and answer.
I'll supply you your answer.
It's, it's a challenge for the teacher, I think, as much as anyone with implementation. So, that, as a parent, would I, in that circumstance, I always talk to the teacher, but is there a team then to sort of convey any concern for implementation or questions that, on classroom approach or curriculum approach? Uh, that's just?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I would always start with the classroom teacher. My child's classroom teacher, and, and if I've got questions, then that teacher can, can answer, and he or she may refer you to a principal or a building-level team, but for the most part, that classroom teacher would be able to explain the approach that he or she's taking and why. And as we move into this process, there may be some changes along the way so that it's more systemic. But the classroom teacher will always be in the loop because of that self-correcting feedback loop and the three teams. They should always be part of that discussion and know what's going on and be able to, to address your concern.
And then, in that loop, the classroom teacher would then take it in, do that support system and review their challenges and, and then, the collaboration of how to respond to that.
Correct. Right, and it may need to get bumped up to the next level, but that's, that's the process.
And as far as, want to tag on to that, as part of what you just described, the self-correcting feedback loop, it's nice that that happens within a collaborative team, because then the person that belongs to the building leadership team and then, the person belongs to district leadership team, a problem that once school finally boys might be able to be shared with the entire district, and then somebody, "Oh, yeah, we're, we're facing that same obstacle." So, again, it might be able to be addressed from a systemic perspective and not just a isolated case.
Well, this, if a student has problems in fifth grade and goes to the intervention, is ILB, is that part of the intervention?
It could be.
Okay, and then, he starts doing pretty good in AIMS Web, he's back on track, he's in the core now, and no other problems. And then, school ends. So, what happens the next year? Does that intervention kind of follow him, or is the next, that school tell the next school what's going on?
The, the data will follow the child. So, if there's a continuing need, the next school will know it because we'll have this history.
Or does he have to go to that first kind of testing through AIMS Web to kind of, for them to catch up?
Every, every kid gets screened three times a year. So, if there is a problem at the end of the year, the new school, if there's a transition, will know about it, and they can get started right away. If they're on track, then, then they're fine.
And one of the reasons that we, we delay the fall testing for at least a couple weeks into the school year is because of false positives that happen. Kids are gone for two or three months, they come back. If you screen them right away, you're going to get kids that flag that really don't flag, they just needed to be reminded that they're back at school and get back in the swing of things. Yes, ma'am?
We've talked to MTSS for some time in our district. Can you maybe give us a brief overview of this or the history of when we got involved and how this is continuing like that or?
I'll at least leave the first part of that up to you. I don't know when you got really stuck.
Well, and Leanne has a longer history than I do.
I think it was probably about six years ago, we started district-wide, and I don't think we were really ready for some of the concepts that we're going to have to embrace. So, this time around, it's much easier.
And when we originally initiated that, was it focused on, on reading, math, and behavior, or was there?
Reading has been.
It's always been focused on reading.
And from an MTSS history perspective, reading was the first content area and was the only content area until 2009. And that's when we started to pilot the behavior module, and then, in late 2009, we also started to pilot the math module. So, reading was really the focus at the beginning of MTSS.
So, research base is much deeper on reading?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, that, that non-experience now with MTSS allows us to be at a sustainable level?
Yes, it does. And a part of that sustainability is the updated research. So, by, we're really pushing more the, the district approach. When we started MTSS, it was, and it's still allowable for an individual school to go through the MTSS process, but then, you would have a school, you know, in a district of three, four, five, six, ten schools, whatever, and only one school doing it. And that really created a problem for sustainability and integration. So, we, as a Core Team, are, are pushing, if you will, more of the systemic approach, and then, that allows a person like myself, a district person, to be associated and connected with your district, so that new research is pushed when we get it.
Have we been district-wide then from the beginning?
I don't think we have been district-wide since high school.
And that was very, very common to all the elementary students.
You said that the, the system goes through eighth grade. Didn't you say that?
Well, no, AIMS Web, well, AIMS Web assessed through the eighth grade, but they didn't, they didn't unveil the high school norms this past year. But what I said with eighth grade is MTSS is opposed to RTI. So, our mastery level for RTI, their goal is to get a kid to fifth-grade mastery. MTSS is goal is to get to eighth-grade mastery, which, for example, in math, algebra has been proposed to be an eighth-grade level course for quite some time now. And algebra, mastery in algebra has shown through research to be a predictor for future success through college algebra. So, that's why eighth grade is the, the cap in MTSS. But AIMS Web assesses through eighth grade, but then, there is reading and math norms through the high school, and that's, that's new. Many of the other assessment programs will only assess through the fourth or sixth grade because of RTI initial push. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Todd, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for coming out and sharing with us.
Thank you. Garden City is a joy to work with. We see you guys, you have great leadership, great people. It's, I don't mind driving this far. Thank you.
Your business, we have, first reading on the policy, please.
Well, we're continuing the process of updating the board's policies. And again, I want to emphasize that, that these policies are aligned to, to Kansas State laws and, well, as federal law. They not only have been reviewed by the Kansas Association of School Board attorneys, but they also are reviewed by your councilman, Mr. Griselle. If you notice this evening, I asked that, that the renewed policy, JVC enrollment, and the original agenda. And the reason for that is I had some questions coming from board members regarding this policy and some suggestions for change on this policy. So, I pulled, asked, pulled it from the agenda so that we can show the board at the next meeting what the changes that the board member is recommending versus what KSB is recommending. And in the meantime, I will share this policy with Mr. Griselle, so he can look at it from a legal perspective, so we're aligned there as well. And then, that'll come to a more formal discussion with the board where you can either adopt the policy from the Kansas Association of School Board or the policy as proposed by the board member. So, that we get a fair look at the policy. You have three other policies before you this evening to look at. One is a weapons policy, another one is interrogation investigations, the other one is release of student records. And releasing student records is really a lot of perp information there, keep us informed in federal law there, and releasing student records. Other, how we work with the police department and, and the sheriff's department on the interrogation investigations and your policy on how that, that we use, there are principals use, or associate principals use in interrogating and investigating situations as they arise in the buildings. The last one is the weapons policy, and a lot of this is in line with the State Schools Act. And it's pretty specific in what a weapon is and what would they do there. Sometimes, we're really handcuffed on, on the outcome there, the student were bringing a weapon to school, and it's pretty much a mandatory hundred, eight to six-day suspension. But I, as did you look at these, and probably ninety-some percent of our policies are in line and almost identical to the Kansas Association of School Boards, which is fine. But with that said, as a board, that's what you do, is set policy. This board has deviated from policies for KSB intentionally, because you represent the norms of this community. But the purpose of having our local, your council look at it is we still have to follow the law. So, we still have to be aligned there. That kind of gets in the way sometimes, I know, that we need to follow the law. So.
That said, are there any questions to add to this board?
Dr. April, on the interrogation and investigations portion, mostly with the law enforcement-initiated investigations at school. It states that questioning of students during school hours unless the student's parents or guardian has given the school permission to allow a questioning. I know that this is a new portion. I don't know if it's been done in the past.
Where are you on this? I'm sorry.
Sorry. The interrogation investigations, page one, last paragraph, law enforcement-initiated investigations at school. And then, it goes on to the next page.
Yeah, much of this is in line with, if law enforcement comes in for a bill.
Right, and the state statute in the face law says it's under fourteen that you have to, that you're required to have a child's guardian.
Present.
Present and/or wait their Miranda rights. So, I don't know if we want to change that to reflect under fourteen. Since it's underlined, I'm assuming that this is all new, because I don't think it's necessarily been in practice before. I don't know if we will, law enforcement officers have always gotten permission from a guardian or parent to talk to someone, say, "The high school is being investigated for something."
I believe we do follow that.
Okay, I do.
Yeah, with that said, if they come into our school with a warrant, we have to honor that warrant. I have your question.
I don't give permission in child, child abuse cases that don't ask school permission, but.
Right, and that's a different section in, in here.
I don't think they, they don't ask further permission to talk to someone at the high school.
Right, but according to this.
A lot of times, we interrogate, we have interrogated outside school. So, unless, to my understanding, unless it's a school-related crime, that interrogation goes on, on school premises. So, if he calls me, that's what happens.
I think that's our practice.
Okay.
But I understand, Dr. Carl and I deal with each property on a day-to-day basis, and that's my understanding of our practice.
Yeah, it's, it's not initiated by school, police, or anything, unless it's an emergency situation, a child abuse, that doesn't happen.
But do we want to add the under fourteen? I don't know. Yeah, just something to think about.
Let us take a look at that. This is just for, yeah, this is the first, I mean, this is the first time it's coming to, but we can balance that off in the street. I don't think it's, but we do.
I'm trying to wrap my mind around the, oh, the traffic violation concept, too. If a student is speeding at Garden City High School, and, I mean, I just presume that a law enforcement officer can pull them over and interrogate them about what they're doing. But am I reading this wrong? It just prohibits that?
No. That's not good school, first of all.
Well, you just said school property, and I didn't know how far school property is.
Coming into the school and calling the student down and interrogating if she, with that administration or whatever, in violation of school property in front of an officer, the officer can, can discharge his duties or her duties as an officer and do whatever they're entitled to as a law enforcement officer.
Based on the posted.
Based on the posted speed limit or whatever we put up?
Or if they commit a crime in front of the officer.